I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First order of business, did everybody read the minutes from last session? June 17th. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda minutes from June 17th?
Motion to approve the agenda?
I'll take a second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda from June 17th, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, let's move on, so.
Motion to approve the minutes from June 17th, 2019?
Did I say that incorrectly?
You skipped over it. I'm just trying to cut them.
Minutes from June 17th, that's what I just said, isn't it?
I did the agenda first.
Oh, oh, the agenda, I meant June 17th. So, yes, I skipped them, I did them in the wrong order, so. How about, how let's do the agenda?
No, we did the agenda, the agenda is all set, we need to do the rest.
I said agenda from June 17th, so I'm sorry I confused everybody. That was for the agenda, is everybody okay with that? Okay, now we'll move on to the approval of the open session minutes from June 17th. Did everybody get a chance to read them?
Yes.
And, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the open session minutes, June 17th.
And can I get a vote to approve? Everybody that approves, say aye. Okay, good. All right, are we clear now?
We're clear.
All right, excellent, so. Next on the agenda, community comments, we have quite a few people, any comments from the community? Please, please come up if you have any comments.
I just have one question.
Yep, go ahead.
Is this the only time that it's allowed comment, or are we allowed at the end as well?
This is the time during the meeting that you can speak.
So we hear something and we have a comment, we have to wait till the next one to make the comment?
Yes.
Okay, no, I'm just wondering, I haven't been to work in class.
No, I'm trying to think through my brain, because this is my first, this is my first session in this role, so.
Oh, okay.
Please forgive me.
No, that's fine.
But yeah, if you have any comment, come on, please come on.
I just want to say hello from CPAC, we're gonna make an effort to attend more of the meetings this year.
Thank you very much, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's comments.
All right, well, good evening, everybody, and welcome back. It was a long summer, to say the least, 12 weeks. First order of business is per Policy J, FBB, which is school choice, and also mask law, chapter 76, section 12B. We are required with regard to do two public announcements of school choice openings. The very first one, we did before the conclusion of the school year, June 3rd, and then we take a look at enrollment variations as they play out. It's pretty much status quo, however, in consultation with the principals, there is one additional opening of school choice in grade 1 at Clough, and one additional opening in grade 5 at Misco, and those are the only reported changes. Second piece of business, just for your information purposes, and I put some background notes from DESI. Our commissioner, Jeff Riley, unveiled during the summertime, something known as Project Kaleidoscope, which is something that he and the department are super excited about. Technically, the full name is the Kaleidoscope Collective for Learning. And it's something that he is going to be offering school districts and individual schools across the Commonwealth during this fall. And it's basically an opportunity for districts that really want to push teaching and learning, and specifically assessment strategies in a more holistic manner, to come together as a cohort and create these performance-based assessments that are closely aligned with appropriate state standards. His ultimate vision is to have a system in place that would act as an alternative to MCAS. So if you could picture this, having a system of performance-based tasks, many of which would be done in a group setting as an alternative to the traditional standard MCAS tests. He is super enthusiastic about it, very excited about it, both at the superintendent's and the principals' conference. He gave a great deal of attention to it. So for informational purposes, I filed a letter of intent saying that we would be interested in more information in applying to be part of this pilot program. We're anticipating probably sometime in October, the full application to be a member of the pilot and to look at the type of work that's ongoing in the district and the district's capacity is going to be part of the application. But I share that with you for information purposes, okay? And then also, this summer, we got the terrific news in July that we received a grant for the amount of $28,760 to upgrade our security camera system at Misco Hill Middle School. As I think we mentioned back in March, when we applied for the grant, the grant is one-time funds that came from the surplus funds from the state's FY 2018 budget that I know Governor Baker was very instrumental in releasing. So if you think about it, and if you've been in the main office here at the high school, we're going to have a comparable system that you see here at the high school, at Misco Hill. It is a major upgrade, we are going from a total of nine cameras at Misco to over, to 50. And a brand-new digitized DVR system and a brand-new monitor in the office as well. I'd really like to express my thanks and give props to Jay Byer, who was really instrumental in pursuing this, along with our school resource officer, Steve Senko, from Mendon. So kudos to you guys. And then last but not least, speaking of the state and the state budget, just as a FYI, I know all throughout the spring process, we were talking about how we came out with the state budget, and ultimately, I believe we had a shortfall, I think it was of $282,000 for the FY 2020 budget. As the summer played out, things went both ways, as far as additions and subtractions, as far as people leaving the district, but then additional needs coming up. But I do want to share with you, I believe in your packet are the final FY 2020 cherry sheets, which detail the final allocations. Unfortunately, chapter 70 remained absolutely status quo, as it was through the House and the Senate budget, where we received the bare minimum, the whole harmless amount of $30 per student, which translated to $66,030 over our FY 19 allocation. The regional transportation reimbursement was finalized at the Senate's established 80% reimbursement rate, and in recalibrating or reestimating what that comes out on our FY 2020 cherry sheet, it is a grand total of $1,145,848, which is $26,510 more than our FY 19 allocation. But in what we projected, it's about $50,766 more. So it was very, very challenging, as I say in my background notes, because the budget literally was not finalized until the first, this current month. So that makes things obviously a challenge, the challenge continues for FY 2020, and Jay will be speaking about that a little bit longer in a few minutes, when he discusses how we closed out FY 18. Okay? Any questions on any of that? Thank you.
Okay, so next, administrators' comments, first up, we have Joseph Licku.
So Joe is here tonight, our IT department was extremely busy over the summer with two major undertakings, first, PowerSchool, which is our new student information system, which in my humble opinion is a dramatic upgrade over iPass, which had really become dated, and there had become a lot of technological issues with it. And then also, our new website, which is known as Aptigee, so take it away, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Hi, everybody, hope you had a good summer. I think the last time I was here, I was talking a little bit about we were going to be looking at going to another SIS system, and I think that was back in the fall of last year. Fast forward to today, we picked a product, we ended up going with a product called PowerSchool, which is a national company, they're based out of California, but locally used around here. You may have, you may have seen it in other districts, or you know, heard somebody talking about it. To kind of recap where we got, how we got here, our existing product, iPass, just is starting to show its age. It's been very temperamental as far as, you know, things that we were looking for, for updates on the product. The company was acquired by another company, we started to kind of see the writing on the wall that we were, you know, should be probably looking around for something else. We spent most of January and February interviewing companies, going kind of out on a mini RFP on what we could seemingly find out there in the market. After a lot of meetings and a lot of discussion, we ended up kind of settling on PowerSchool. We awarded them the contract in March, and we've been working with them since then to get it up and running for this school year. So with this school year looming on Wednesday, pleased to say we have 95% of what we need for day one. We're still cranking in some midnight oil to get the last few checkboxes done, so that we can really, you know, hit the ground running on Wednesday. Today, we had, during the professional development day, we had, all four schools were here. We gave them, the teachers all trained in different groups, specifically for their grade level area. And we also had two trainers from the company here on site to facilitate those trainings. So we had direct training from the companies, plus some added stuff from Bernie, myself, anybody else that was standing in the room. Maureen was really great about getting us some time in here and getting that done today, before the school started, so people weren't completely blindsided for the first day of school. We've been working over the summer to move most of the data from iPass out into the, into the new product. We ran into a little bit of a road bump with the data move, because we had to do year-end reporting to the state. So that pushed us into mid-July, it was the earliest we could actually pull the data and get it to them and into the product. Normally, this is like a 12 to 14 week process, we cut it down to like six, and it's, we're there. We have all the current year data there, all of the current schedules for all four schools. The only things that are still on the checklist that haven't gotten done yet, the parent module, we're still kind of working some of the kinks out of, just to make sure that we have the right permission set, so that you don't accidentally get your neighbor's kid instead of your own. Things that just have, just some finish work on it, making sure the schedule appears correctly. I know that the schools are still kind of fluid with their schedules, and will be for another week or so, as the, you know, school starts and things happen. So that's, in a nutshell, where we are with PowerSchool. I'm really happy with the way the staff has embraced it, for the most part, everybody's been very excited, they're looking forward to using something new. I think everybody was just kind of fed up with the old one, to be honest, and they're kind of looking forward to something newer, better, fresher. I got a lot of high fives and a few scared faces, but that's to be expected. But overall, we're doing very well there, and kudos to Bernie, I mean, I, she knows every student in this district, and every, you know, every bit of data that's in our current system, and she's been going through that en masse, trying to get all of that information over into the new system configured correctly, and going through spreadsheet after spreadsheet after spreadsheet, so. And my staff in general, they've been picking up the slack, just trying to get, you know, school open to iPads and everything else that has to happen for day one. The other thing Joe talked about was the website, so that was another over-the-summer kick. Previously, we were using a product called, Joe's pulling it up now, called Blackboard. They own everything in the education space, so Blackboard was hosting our website, as well as providing us services for call notification, email, notifications to parents. We've since kind of redone the whole package with one company called Aptigee. Joe and I had a conversation with this company back in April, I would say. And we kind of told them our woes, and they presented us with this option. This platform allows us to host our website and all of that all in one portal. So Joe has a one-stop communication spot now, I'm gonna pick on him just because he has kind of an interesting role in this, taking into account like a snow day. Previously, Joe would have to go onto the call notification, record the message, blast it out to everybody in the morning, get that 5:00 AM phone call, the, then he would have to go onto the website, log in, then he'd have to go to his Twitter page, then he'd have to go to his Facebook page, and you know, maybe six or 10 steps to get this. In the new platform, Joe actually can go right across the board and just check a bunch of boxes, and as long as, you know, a little bit of setup work, I'm not trying to make this sound like it's a breeze, but it'll allow him, from one pain, to be able to send out all of those notifications from one shot.
The beautiful thing about this, it's actually very interesting, because this company does considerable market research from community to community, and they've generally found, across the Commonwealth and also within our district, the number of people, our parents, our family members, that are accessing our website or individual school websites, they're usually doing it on a mobile device, overwhelming majority. So our website through this company, Aptigee, is optimized for a mobile experience. Secondly, as this picture on the right shows, we now have our own app. So if you go to the App Store, whether you're on an Apple or an Android phone, and just do a quick search for Mendon Upton, you'll see the Mendon Upton Regional School District app. I strongly recommend that you download it. As you download it, just like any other app, it'll ask you whether you want to receive notifications or not that pop up on your phone, and then you can obviously allow them or don't allow them, and then you can very simply see and explore the app and go into anything. So I think the power of this is, this gives us another tool to effectively communicate with our families. As a matter of fact, over the weekend, I sent out a quick push notification about the whole issue of the triple E virus, and what the school's response was with regard to after-school activities. So I think we still have a little bit of a learning curve, but Joe's point is totally dead-on with regard to, kind of gives us one-stop shopping with regard to our website, our mass calling and email system, our social media linkages, and so on, so. Job well done, my friends.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, sorry, question, so, some of the ways that, at least I was using the website in the past, I think I talked to you in the hallway, I'm familiar with where pieces of information were, and I'm sure it's just getting used to the new website and finding all the information again?
Sure.
But is there like, for the, for the primary pieces of information, is there any way I can get a mapping of that, or just a simple list?
Yeah, so, if you click on the, will you pull it back up? There is a way.
There's like a site map? And I can send that to you, because I don't have directly in front of me.
Well, there is.
So there's a site map?
Yeah, it does follow a very, very standard framework, so.
Yeah, good, I'll just do that, and I'll send that along and pass it through Joe, just so I can get it. I'm just asking for the community.
Yeah, no, definitely, and I'll, it's still a work in progress. We just went live with it a few weeks ago, as you may have noticed, it kind of transitioned quietly over the summer, which is kind of the way we wanted it. And we're still bringing stuff over and cleaning it up, so Katie Jordan, our webmaster, webmaster, I guess, yeah. She is doing, you know, double duty on that, that she normally does. And she's trying to get up-to-date information, because we have a lot of stuff that was on that was very dated. So we're cleaning that up at the same time. Any other questions?
When is like the parent component of PowerSchool to be ready, to be rolled out, to?
Good question, I, we're looking at it early next week, I would say Tuesday, Wednesday, by the time we, we just have a lot going on for the first couple of days of school, getting the staff up to date, and making sure that they're comfortable in entering, you know, the basics like attendance and getting their first couple of grades. As far as the updates that the parents could expect, we would follow the same kind of procedure we did with iPass, it would be every couple of weeks, probably, for kind of the standard, some teachers will be faster, so it's just the way it is.
Thanks, Gerald.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, the budget closeout, Jay Byer?
Hi, all right, so you got a couple of things in your packet, one is a one-sheet page that I pretty much gave you the same last year with this year's accounting, shows you our revenue expenditures and where we sort of ended up. The year-to-date closeout, I went and highlighted several of the accounts that really drove our budget, drove ourselves over in many areas. Clearly, it's in maintenance buildings and in special education, those were the two real heavy hitters that probably drove us up. You know, as always, I like to talk about snow and ice, and we did really well there, but that's the only reason we finished in any kind of solvency whatsoever. As far as the closeout goes, though, you know, we, we're gonna end up with around $100,000 left. As you know, my goal every year is to finish with 1% of the budget not getting spent, which would be about $350,000, so I didn't achieve my goal in that. As far as the undesignated fund balance, which is the account that matters, I know that the state likes to look at E and D, but E and D is just sort of a state-controlled thing that doesn't really impact us as much. I think we're continuing to hit these accounts that are what I would refer to as one-time accounts in order to keep ourselves solvent, I mean, Joe mentioned the FY 20 budget that we're in right now, and the reality is our state funding increased by $100,000. Local funding, they did very well, they gave us around $1 million, so that's about 1.1 million. Salaries alone are up $750,000 this year, $700,000, I should say. Salaries, health insurance, transportation, out-of-district tuition, all of these things continue to drive our budget, and the revenue's not there, so where we had spent several years really building up our reserve account, school choice, E and D, undesignated fund balance, all those things, we are starting to dwindle those accounts, because otherwise, we're gonna be looking at very substantial cuts, because there just isn't enough money coming in to cut, to fund what we're trying to do. I'm estimating our E and D at the end of this year, after the DOR looks at all the things, it's probably gonna be in the, you know, I think on the sheets you have, it says around $550,000, $600,000, it's probably gonna be less than that, it's probably gonna be closer to $300,000, which means we won't have that as a funding source for FY 21. School choice is a little better, but we had to tap into school choice quite extensively, both last year and this year, so that too begins to dwindle. So I think, you know, I'm forecasting that we're gonna have a tough call in FY 21 in order to get things going. FY 20, we're gonna be fine, I mean, we've got a budget in place. One thing you should know is we are gonna have to recertify the FY 20 budget at our next meeting. It doesn't change the town's assessments in any way, shape, or form, but we did get additional state aid, and we need to include that in our final budget there. That's about it right now, I don't know, is there any questions on any of the information I gave you? I like no questions, that means my spreadsheets are actually understandable. Sometimes you put these sheets together, and they make sense to me, and I'm the only one.
So Jay, just quickly, on the closeout? So you're saying that estimated E and D certification for basically the end of 2019 is 624?
I think it's gonna be less than that, what I didn't recall until I did, I just did the fund balance roll-in this morning. So when I did it this morning, and I looked at everything, one of the things that we did last year that I wasn't accounted for before I put this all together, when I did the roll-in this morning, is we appropriated money that came in from MSBA over into that stabilization account, capital stabilization account we created last year. You have to take that off of what's gonna be left for the E and D certification. Now it's $337,000.
So there's the capital stabilization account.
Yes, we have $675,000, I would say, in an account for capital projects going down. If you remember, both towns a year ago allowed us to establish this account. We should be able to use that to do some of the building stuff going forward that is really crippling us. But there are some major projects, as you know, we've got a capitalist that's pretty extensive. $675,000 really doesn't put a dent in it. But there are some stuff that we could probably address in the next three or four years, that, you know, we need, probably need to address. You know, going back to last year, the things that are driving us are, you know, as an example, the water treatment system at Clough. We just, over the summer, I know you probably all saw emails that there was no water at Clough for about three weeks. The reason for that is the water tank, the potable water tank, had to be drained, cleaned, re-coated on the inside, and then filled up, and the system had to be activated again. That's gonna run us about $30,000 just to do that. We still have to do something with the treatment system that we're working with DEP on. We have a new water treatment operator that's advising us to do a couple of things that I think previously we hadn't looked at, so we're trying to reexamine that before we sink a bunch of money into doing more work there. We had issues at Misco with the boiler, as you know, we talked about it last year. All these things that are continuing to drive us, I am hoping that this year, we're not gonna get hit with these kind of things. But I can tell you, over the summer here at Nittmuck, we had to re-weld a couple of sections of the boiler. I think we had another water leak, a small one today at Clough, although I don't think it's a substantial cost or anything like that. The well went out at Misco at one point, we had to replace the pump. Again, these are, you know, $2,000 or $3,000 jobs, but they all add up, we used to keep getting $3,000 here and $2,000 there. You know, it is my childhood, somebody I met when I was a child, Everett Dirksen, who was a senator from Illinois back in the 50s and 60s, used to say, you know, "A million here and a billion there, suddenly you're talking about real money." That's what I feel like sometimes, every time I see a maintenance thing, it's like, okay, that's another $20,000, what's it gonna be?
And then when you look at our expenditure report and closeout of the year, our public school transportation for spend and our private school external stuff is significantly above what we were expecting?
Yeah, there's, there was some spend, costs, you know, out-of-district tuition, transportation costs, they continue to just continually increase. Consultant costs for what's now called medical therapeutic services, but it's basically consultants for pretty much anything related to students on IEPs, that's substantially over. You know, we tried to take what we had previous year, we carried it over, but we split it between these accounts, and I had to do some finagling to get it in the right places. But we have significantly increased those line items for this coming year, because, you know, my approach is, if we spent it last year, we're probably gonna spend it again this year. Out-of-district tuition is always a challenge, I mean, you know, we usually try to, you know, appropriate an extra $50,000 to $100,000 just in case something comes up. But quite honestly, that doesn't even cover tuition sometimes, if you have one child go out, you could be looking at $100,000 in tuition and $50,000 in transportation. We had one out-of-district school that we were notified on August 15th, I want to say, that their tuition was going up by 22%. Retroactive to October, or August 1st, so we got a bill for what we didn't pay in August and going forward, but that was about a $25,000 hit that just, you know, it just, it just keeps coming.
And tuition to collaborative schools, is the tuition to Norfolk Ag incorrect?
No, tuition to collaborative schools is what's called by county collaborative, those are out-of-district placements for special ed, but they're public schools. And that was one of the things that we went, I went and spoke to the legislature on, to see if we could amend the movement law so that it applies to all out-of-district placements instead of just private schools. Norfolk Ag is up in the same series of accounts, but in the regular ed line item. Quite honestly, we actually dropped a couple of students, we had 15 last year, I believe we have 13 this year. So that actually worked out fairly well. We had, we paid for transportation as well, which we do as a collaborative. We had another district, actually, the town of Leicester, who We had another district, actually, the town of Leicester, who wants to join in, and they're going to bring their child to Millbury, where the closest stop is, but that reduced our costs a little bit on that. So we actually do really well, you know, tuition is a killer, but the transportation piece isn't too bad. I mean, we're transporting maybe 13 kids and we're paying, I think about $15,000 a year for that, where sometimes with a special ed situation, for one kid you're paying $45,000 to $50,000.
Yep.
Then we, you know, as far as '21 goes, we go out to bid on transportation again this year, we negotiate all of our contracts this year, so all that is stuff that's going to be hanging over us as we begin to look at forward FY '21, which I know sounds crazy since the school year just started, but my head is already looking toward the next school year as soon as we get through the first week.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions for Jay? Okay, moving on. So, new business, Merzty Education Services Analysis Presentation.
Okay. I'm very, very pleased this evening to introduce two gentlemen who were in district last spring, Dr. Michael Nieman and Dr. Michael Palladino, who have extensive background in special education administration and administration in general, and they are from Futures Inc., which is a consulting firm that works with school districts actually across the nation in kind of conducting an analysis of all different types of services, but the real expertise is in looking at special services staffing, the effectiveness of delivery of services, and the efficiency. So you have in the packet the report based upon several days in the district and kind of looking at our staffing patterns, and Mike and Mike are here to kind of give an overview of their findings and analysis. So, gentlemen.
Is there a remote? Do you have sensitive being said?
If you want to move this over there and just run it off this, that'll be perfectly fine.
Thank you Superintendent, we look forward to presenting a summary of the report. Okay, we are competent, just want to throw that out there. So as the Superintendent said, it's the Mike and Mike Show, either you get both of your names right or wrong, I think we create a few headaches for the people who are here in the spring. So in addition to Dr. Palladino and I, who are the principals, I want to acknowledge other, some other people on our, Caitlin Mortensen, who supported the data, you'll see the report, there's quite a bit of data. David Boyle as well, helping with data analysis, and Heather Stenhouse, she's our executive assistant, who helped with the final presentation of the report, the final formatting. So a lot went in it, into this report from our end, a lot went into it from the district's end, so we just want to acknowledge the Superintendent, the partnership, the principals, Dr. Palladino went to all the schools, and we'll talk about that methodology, but it was quite undertaking, even though we'll talk, the scope is quite limited to three items, it was quite undertaking for everybody to have us in the district, all the data requests, everyone was so responsive and professional, and again, Superintendent, I want to thank everybody in Central Office for that. I think that the results of the report, you know, the comprehensiveness is really due, again, to a whole bunch of people, we do want to acknowledge the district's role in that. So the primary purposes of tonight's presentation to the board are to review the methodology and study, talk about how we arrived at the results, to present pertinent information for contextual purposes. So we'll talk a little about least restricted environment, or free public education, some of things that Dr. Palladino will talk about. When we get to some, perhaps some contextual information, it's just to kind of bring the results into focus. Offer key findings, provide areas of opportunity or recommendations, and facilitate forum for discussion. We would welcome any questions from the board throughout. We will have time, again, for discussion, but if there's anything that's not clear, we would welcome questions throughout the presentation. We talked about the scope being very focused, as the Superintendent said, we do our work nationwide, all the way from Maine to California, because all districts, in subway shape or form, whether fiscally, programmatically, out-of-district placements, you name it, every single district in the country is struggling with special ed to some degree, and that's not an overstatement, that's true. So when we work in partnership with districts, we're really trying to focus on those areas to be mindful of the resources the district has and to really fine-tune those areas. So the areas that, in partnership with district, that we focused on, Mike, if you go back for a second, were related services. So those are services like speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, behavioral health, that are related to the IEP, that's why they're called related services. Certified, non-certified teachers there, we're looking at really the numbers and how the service delivery model looks, and perhaps there's some programmatic information that went in, goes into that discussion, then central office personnel, again, looking at sort of how is central office, the SSS office configured, how is it interfacing with school-based personnel, what do those numbers look like, and again, kind of reflecting on our current practices in central office. So I want to talk about the methodology, you can see in Appendix A of the report, we talked with 50 stakeholders in the district, and we feel really good about that, that's a really nice sample size, given the size of the district and given the scope, which was laser-focused, that that 50 really does represent a really nice cross-section of different perspectives. We talked with central office leadership, principals, teachers, paraprofessionals, team chairs, and related services, and again, you're going to get to see that, that next slide, how that broke out. Questions were catered to the interviewees, area of expertise and relevance. So the first question that Dr. Palladino asked was this idea of culture. Are students with disabilities, are all your students at the school, is there any sense of here's a specialized student and here's a giant student? So that question was universal, it was a question you asked of everybody, whether they were a principal or a teacher or a paraprofessional, those are questions I ask the related service providers, because again, this idea of culture and that ownership of all students is so critical to discussion of a special ed program. Non-valued site visits, Dr. Palladino doesn't own a clipboard, but I think if he did, you'd leave it in your car, right?
Leave it in the car.
Yeah, because when we walk through the schools, we don't want teachers or parents or principals or anyone in the school to feel like we're evaluating, it's non-valued, but it's a sense, it's a way for our team to get a sense of the continuum of services because again, that drives staffing, the way a district will choose to use its staffing is really driven by its philosophy and its instructional practices. Comparative analysis, you'll see, we'll get to a chart as an example of comparative analysis. Dr. Palladino and I have conducted about 50 assessments in Massachusetts in the last, say, 10 years between both his organization and, Dr. Palladino is a member of NSPEC, which is a entity that supports schools as well. So we really have a nice sample size in Massachusetts because we are based in Springfield, we just, we have a lot of data at our fingertips, and that was really helpful to provide that reflection point for the district. And then document reviews, looking at policies, procedures, assignments of one-to-one. Dr. Palladino will talk quite a bit about the assignment of paraprofessionals during this segment, so it's really helpful to understand sort of the systems in place and what the district has to offer. So again, I mentioned that we talked to 50 stakeholders, I'm not going to belabor and go through each item, but you can see that we had a lot of representation from those different areas, so we feel really good in terms of the people who spoke to us, and just earlier it was confidential, so you'll see the report in tonight's presentation, there's no way to know who said what. So we're going to start with the first of the three sections, that's related services. We talked about, part of our role tonight is not just to present the findings, but to present contextual information. So I'm a speech-language pathologist by trade, and related services, whether it's speech or OT or PT, work within an educational model in a school. So if you think about ways that students might receive therapy, there's clinical or medical therapy, which is typically outside the school, but within the school, related service providers have to work within educational model, because our role is to help students access their educational program. So that is a real key question that we asked, and it was based on those questions, based on IEP reviews, based on our discussion with team chairs, that the related services are really working solidly within that educational model, so that's a real celebration. Despite some challenges, there's a healthy sense of culture of celebration when students are ready to exit or have services reduced. We don't always see that, sometimes, it, those are hard discussions at IEP tables, to say, "We're going to go from 60 minutes to OT to 30 minutes." It should rightly be viewed as a celebration and our view that the student is making progress, but sometimes not all IEP stakeholders see it that way, they see it as almost taking away from that student's IEP. So again, we're, you know, it's never going to be 100%, but based on our conversations, the IEP teams are really doing a very good job explaining this whole idea of educational model, that IEPs and related services are not meant to be forever, they're there to support students until they can reach a level of independence. So that was another really nice celebration to see. And for the most part, we saw this idea of front-loading. Front-loading is essentially giving younger students more education, more educational services than older students. So if you think about the whole idea of early intervention or Head Start, the research shows that you give students a lot of those early intervening programs, because that's when the brain has plasticity and that's where they get the big bang for the buck. And as students get older, even though some students with significant disabilities may need, say, speech in middle and high school, typically we see this dwindling of services over time. So that's front-loading. RSPs, the related service providers, you'll see that in the report, are seen as effective and valued team members, very professional group of related service providers, well regarded by teachers, by principals, by team chairs, they really are seen as a valued component of the IEP team. There is a need for exit entry guidelines for speech-language services, and those to be worn systematic, again, the district is not unusual, most districts that we've analyzed do not have guidelines, again, they're meant to be guidelines to ensure equal access for students. It's not meant to take the I, the IEP, the I stands for individualized, but it does help the team determine, so one student on one side of town doesn't have any more or less access to services than a student on the other side. So it's that walking that line between individualization and making all access to services equitable. As depicted below, amended Upton is lightly staffed in psychology and lightly staffed in behavioral health, and highly staffed in PT, speech and OT are staffed to expectations. So I thought, it's okay, I'll spend a little time on this chart. So here's the discipline, and again, this is the exact same chart that you'll see in the report. The district ARI, ARI stands for availability ratio, and that's a fancy way of saying how many staff are available to students in any given discipline. It's not their caseload. So for example, when we divide the number of students with disabilities in the district by the number of speech staff, there are 65, there's 65 students with disabilities for every one speech-language provider, if that makes sense. And that allows us to do that apples-to-apples comparison to other districts. So the expected ratio in Massachusetts is 60 to 1, so most districts, the average, is 60 students with disabilities to every one SLP. Again, that's not the SLP's caseload, that's the amount of students with disabilities in proportion to the amount of speech-language staff. And we have a standard deviation, so again, I'm not sure if I'm making people break out sweats with their stats courses, but if you think about a bell-shaped curve, the standard deviation is from 16% to 84%. So the standard deviation is 10, so anything within 50 to 70 is in the ballpark, and you can see 65 would fall right within that range. OT, same principle, the expected ratio is 180 students, and again, less students require OT services in speech and language because the connectivity between speech and language and academics. In the district as of the spring, and we know this is somewhat of a moving number because districts have different needs from year to year, different staffing, so this feels a little bit like gravity driving, but this was the data as of the spring. So the OT ARI of 160 to 1 compares to 181, but still within that bell-shaped curve because the standard deviation is 30. PT is more generously staffed at 252 to 1, even with that standard deviation of 50, so it would fall on the left-hand side, in other words, more generously staffed. Psychology is the one discipline that we use a different metric for. The National Association for School Psychologists recommends a benchmarking of overall students, not just the students with disabilities, because psychologists do a lot of work within Gen Ed, RTI or MTSS that they're starting to call it out in Massachusetts, bullying in some districts, different initiatives within Gen Ed. So the psychology, again, when we're here in the spring, there's one in-district psychologist, there was some contract work from a local collaborative, it was 2000 to 1, so the higher the number of the less generously staffed, you can see here, psychology was, is an area that was very lightly staffed in the district. And then when we throw in behavioral health, which is school adjustment counselors, some schools have social workers, behavioral health is really anyone in support of the behavioral health needs of students, it's 49, and that is less than the expected ratio. So it's a lightly-staffed behavioral health department. So those are the main findings for that first area. As is currently occurring in response to growing needs, we do recommend the district create district-wide exit entry guidelines, especially for speech and language, with the numbers. One of the, and Mike is going to get into it, we'll talk about ways to think about how central office can be reconfigured, because there's a lot on central office right now in terms of workload. The district could assign a lead staff member to provide oversight and support of the RSPs. So when I was in the medical field, our largest department within rehab was physical therapy, because in hospitals, people are rehabilitated, they need more PT than they need speech and language. In a school, speech and language tends to be the plurality of related services, just because the nature of it, speech and language does. So it could be an SLP, just given, again, the numbers, that could have, we're not talking a totally dedicated position, but just for consideration, some districts have a stipended position for related services, maybe it's, again, doesn't need to be cost prohibitive, but it might be a few hours a month to help coordinate some of those things that are exclusive to related services like professional development. There are some very innovative workload models, again, to meet the needs of students, so it's very cruel math in special ed, as you know, Jay talked about this, it's basically an underfunded mandate. So the question is, how can districts make the most of their resources? One of them is to come in reflective of the types of students, sometimes students don't need weekly services. There's a national 3-1 model, which means that students could get three sessions per month and have the fourth session be a consult, where the speech and language pathologist is consulted with a general ed teacher. It's not for every student, but it is another way to kind of make sure that students are getting what they need, and also in adherence to least restricted environment, not pulling them unnecessarily from the general ed classroom. There is a model, again, we talked about our national work, we do quite a bit of work in New York, so this model is somewhat unique. And again, I think Michael knows this more than most, because you're working with social-emotional learning, but students with emotional behavioral needs is becoming a huge epidemic in the country, and it's not just students with IEPs, we're talking about general ed students that have social-emotional issues, that might be school-phobic, that have issues at home that are affecting their learning. So this whole idea of how to meet the needs of students with behavioral health is a huge, a huge problem. Some schools in New York, as I mentioned, are renting out space, so the community health agencies are actually renting out space in the secondary schools, so students are getting their wraparound services of their community health after, you know, comprehensive programming in the school itself. So we're not saying that this is, should be done tomorrow, but it is an interesting and innovative model that the district might consider as long-term planning to, again, kind of in-source that behavioral health. They build Medicaid or they build third parties all by themselves, it's still cost to the district, and it really is a wonderful way to link what's happening in the school to the community.
I'll jump in here because that particular area is, it did come up in our interviews here in the district, but it's come almost everywhere we go. School health and mental health issues are becoming a real problem, and they're not just special education issues, they're general education issues as well. And so I know that the district here has a strategic goal in their five-year plan, and so it's an opportunity for you at this point to figure out how are you going to attack them? Because it's not something, in my opinion, from the things that we're seeing in the schools, it's not something that the schools can handle by themselves. I think what you have to really understand is your community and doing an assessment of your community, what are the key issues, and all kinds of different factors that are contributing to this. Some call it technology, some call it high-stakes testing, some call it issues in the home. All kinds of different issues are affecting kids. And the bullying and how that we have technology and, you know, it's out there. And so the real issue is how are we going to deal with it, because we still have to educate kids, and we cannot any longer ignore the issues that are going on in the kids' minds. So as you move forward in this whole area, as other schools are now, a lot of the places we go are putting in social-emotional health-type we go are putting in social-emotional health types of things in terms of the curriculum. And what we're suggesting is you think about a curriculum specifically as you, over the next few years. I will add, before I get to this, that the people that I interviewed, although personally I interviewed over all 30 people, and every single one of them loved working in this school district. So it was really enjoyable for me in the time that we spent here, so you should be proud of that. Looking at some of the staffing and some of the other things, Michael had mentioned that we ask specific types of questions, and one of the, again, looking at the culture, we want to see how people feel about how they're being supported with regard to supplies and materials, technologies, and they felt very supported. And I'll just add, I'm happy to see the technologies that they're feeling supported, because I knew Joe when he was in high school in Ashland, and I was a collaborative director in NADAC in Framingham, and Joe was a high school student helping us do our website at the time. That's happened 15 years ago anyway. So it's nice to see that he's had some contribution to our district. Although the certified staff are complementary of the quality of the professional development opportunities, paraprofessionals reported that their PD offerings are limited, and so it's something to be thinking about as you move forward. Paraprofessionals are providing and delivering a lot of direct care services and a lot of direct intervention. And so it's important that they be, understand and be up on any of the changes, and wherever possible, if possible, to include them in some of the professional development things that you're working on. In your district, you have two categories of paraprofessionals. You have what we consider ABA techs, which are really focused on behavioral issues for the most part, and applied behavioral analysis is the ABA piece. And you also have the regular special education paraprofessionals. Although that the ABA techs do employ methodologies other than ABA, the title may be misleading, and so it's something we think about as we move forward. Currently, as we look at the ratios that Michael was talking about, you have 26.8 FTE, ABA techs, and 30.9 FTE for a total of 57.7 full-time equivalencies. You may have more people than that, but the full-time equivalency for paraprofessionals in the district is 57.7. That equates to a ratio of 6.12 students with disabilities for every one paraprofessional, and what we see in other districts as an average is around 8 to 1. So in one regard, you are well-staffed with regard to the expected ratio of paraprofessionals. Three mitigating factors are that you have lower-than-expected certified teachers, you have a composite, composition of students with disabilities with higher needs than expected, and you have more students served within the district. And so when you're doing, and you're also doing inclusion, and when you do that, you're going to need that support help, and so this is not unusual to see.
Yeah, if I can talk a little, Mike, about those mitigating factors. So again, we're somewhat agnostic about the number of paraprofessionals. When it's high, it's not necessarily a celebration, it's not necessarily a bad thing, because again, there might be reasons for that. We've been, some school districts are, there are a lot of paraprofessionals, but there are very few students in out-of-district placements. So it makes sense, because the students with the highest needs are being kept in the district. So as Mike was saying, when we look at those mitigating variables, we want to understand how that checked out. So when we look at the special ed teachers, the ratio was 13.1, and in Massachusetts, typically it's 15 to 1. So again, we're talking about our database. So most schools have, for every 15 students with disabilities, there's one special ed teacher. And the district, it's a little more generously staffed, it's a little less than 14. So we couldn't say that was a mitigating factor of why there would be more paraprofessionals. Sometimes in districts, when there's less teachers, they're hard to find, there's, again, another national epidemic, sorry to bring all this good news about special ed, it's happening. That might be a reason why there's more special ed. Some districts have very high students with high needs. Some school districts, for whatever reason, might have students with, higher numbers of students on the autism spectrum, requiring the, Dr. Pellino said, ABA services, applied behavioral analysis, discrete trials, it's very adult-intensive. Some schools have, for whatever reason, again, students with significant medical issues that might be multiply disabled. So when we looked at the district, the constellation of high-needs, autism spectrum disorder, emotional disability, multiple disabilities, and intellectual disabilities, is 21% of the entire special population, that compares to 27% in the state. Therefore, we couldn't say that the constellation of students and disabilities was a mitigating factor. Lastly, when we looked at out-of-district placements, there's 8%, at least there was at the spring, 8% of students that were served out of district and compares to their expected range within 7 to 10 in Massachusetts, so it's right in the ballpark. So that, we couldn't say it was a mitigating factor, that there were more students in the district that would, that would kind of explain the reason for a paraprofessional. So when we look at those variables, as I think you're about to say, there's some other reason why, the practice patterns, the ABA techs, and sort of the prescription of the service.
And that gets into some of the things we'll talk about with regard to things you So I think what we're talking about as you move forward, you're starting to thinking about putting systems in place that will take a closer look at eligibility for paraprofessional services, especially when you get into that one-to-one type of a situation. In that way, we're looking at for further parity and equalization of access to services. And that way, you can, you'll have a better, able to ensure that for students across the district, irrespective of the level of parental or legal advocacy. I think we need to be thinking about review paraprofessional allocation for specialized programs. Because these programs, its services are in a more restrictive setting, the staffing pattern should match. If the matrix indicates a 2 to 1 ratio, then the classroom schedule should match. The authors have provided examples within the report.
You'll see that in one of your appendices, yeah. So I think that goes back, just to talk about the exit entry guidelines, it's an analog to speech and language guidelines, that when teams meet on the IP, it's individualized, but this provides a framework for the allocation of the paraprofessionals.
The whole idea of ABA, which is applied behavioral analysis, is very specific to the area, or has been anyway, to the area of students who have a diagnosis of autism spectrum disorder. Although in the district, they are doing some other things, I think that the, just by using the ABA designation itself, there ought to be some consideration to changing that and taking a look at some other strategies that give you more flexibility in terms of how you program for kids with autism.
Just as an IP, teachers want to prescribe a certain reading methodology, like Fontes and Penau, for example, that wouldn't ever be put in an IP, just like, again, assigning an ABA paraprofessional, the title almost is misleading because it gives, it gives an expectation of a methodology, when in fact, it's just one more tool in the toolbox.
Again, I come back to the whole idea of specialized training for some of the paraprofessionals who are working with some of the more difficult students. And some of the people have been in the district for a while, and they know the students, and they've been working with them, others are new and kind of learned on the job. And so it's kind of something that you need to keep in mind as you're dealing with students with more severe disabilities. And also, as you go down the road and you start dealing more with the social-emotional issues, and if you're going to need some support help with paraprofessionals in that role, whether that's in special education or general education environments, those people ought to have some background in training and understanding of what's happening in that whole social-emotional field. And so one of the things that we thought about would be to have a paraprofessional from each school to provide input to the professional development committees in those schools.
If I could just go back to the second-to-last bullet, in Appendix C in the report, you'll see a return demonstrate form, and that's basically a template. So let's say I'm an SLP working with Mike on a particular communication methodology. If Michael has an ABA or a one-to-one, this makes sure that the paraprofessional kind of returns and demonstrates that information so that those skills can be generalized in the classroom. So again, as Mike's saying, the paraprofessionals play such a critical role in being that link between certified teachers and the related service providers, and this is just one more modality to make sure, again, the skill sets are being acquired.
One of the other areas that we felt that the district was lightly-staffed was in whole administrative realm, and specifically in the special education department. And so what we're suggesting is ways that you could think about making, easing up the caseload, if you will, for the director of special education in that role because of, just spread too thin, there are too many things in addition to special education. We're talking about 504s, we're talking about all other types of services that, the McKinney-Vento transplant, I'm not sure how many of you know about the McKinney-Vento, but that's, the kids are coming from, the homeless being bused into the school districts. And so what we're taking a look at is, what you need, what we're suggesting is you take a look at how to maybe resolve that problem, because it is putting added stress on the special education staff, because they feel sometimes that they need to have more support from the special education department and the person, you know, people there, it's spread So what we're suggesting is that you think about using your team chairs to attend some of the out-of-district meetings, and more specifically, it would make practical sense to have them attend these meetings for students with disabilities that would otherwise be attending their assigned schools. This would also establish a connection to parents in the event that students with disabilities could possibly return to their neighborhood schools. Again, that should, that last comment should always be a goal and objective, and so by having the team chair out there on a regular basis, I think that would help with that process. Once the requisite workload for the director can be addressed, increasing the director's visibility within the district would be helpful, I think, to the people who are working in the various schools.
So just to summarize, Mike, if you don't mind, just hang on a minute. Again, this is excerpted from the report, the summary and final commentary, there's a lot to like about this district. In many ways, students with disabilities are being very well-served, it's a very professional group, and as Dr. Pellino said, there's just, there's a lot going that's working very well. We'd like to talk about some, perhaps some priority areas across the three. Again, if we talk about elevator speeches in 30 seconds, what would you say, Michael, to help the district? If we had to identify things that are particularly salient in those areas, unrelated services, just to reiterate, Institute the Speech and Language Exit Entry Criteria Guidelines, consider the identification of our lead related service provider to be that liaison. Again, it could be a stipended position, not cost prohibitive, but really provide extra support to the director. Under paraprofessionals, institute a rubric that specifies the need and intensity for one-to-one or shared support. So again, it's based on data. What does the student need in terms of different behaviors or activities of daily living? We have rubrics that we're happy to share with district leadership that helps. Continue intensive professional development for the paraprofessionals. Again, we talked about they're the frontline, they spend the most time with the students and to have, make sure they have the capacity to deal with student needs, with behavior or academics, with topics that correlate to really the areas that support student needs is critical. We consider rebranding that ABA tech to a more inclusive title, whatever that is. I mean, we don't get too hung up on the title, other than to say that ABA does become too confining, and perhaps the name is leading to a narrower view of all the things that they could do. Central office, one of the things that we talked about, easing the workload of the director, because there's so much, when you saw that number, it probably jumped up, you said 382 to 1, that's the ratio right now of central office administrators to students in the district, that's extremely heavily-staffed. And the best way, in our view, is to delegate some of those responsibilities currently within the purview of central office, and maybe to send some of those out-of-district placements to the team chairs. So if you have a team chair at NITM, and there's a student that's supposed to be in an out-of-district placement, it makes sense for a representative from that school to be at that IP meeting, because they can talk about the services that exist at the neighborhood school. If the IP team would determine, this might be the more appropriate placement. So there's a lot that makes sense, both logistically and programmatically, to have the team chairs at each school provide oversight or attend those IPs for students that would otherwise be at their school, if that makes sense. So again, it's just one way to think about that. And as to rotating office hours, again, as Dr. Pellino said, once the director's workload would allow all these things, all these things pie in the sky, a wonderful way for outreach is to actually in-source rotating office hours. I was a professor out of college, the students came to see me, but I was thinking about it. If they were centered in a certain part of campus, I could just as easily have gone to see them in a room that would have allowed them not to have to traipse across campus. So there's something about that outreach where you in-source the office hours, and then people feel much more connectivity to central office leadership.
So in a quick closing, I just wanted to say and reiterate, this is a good school district, and especially good schoolers who've got the special education. You are consistently, students, you're within about the 15% range in terms of the numbers of students or the ratio, or the rate of students in the district, that's several percentage points below the state average. You're within, with out-of-district placements, you're within an acceptable range with regard to what's going on in the state and what's going on in other school districts like this. Bottom line is, special education is an expensive deal, and we heard some comments earlier before. And so as you look at this, and if we can help answer any questions, the reality is, is that you are still doing, you are doing a very good job in a lot of ways.
So that is our presentation. Again, we will open up for questions.
I have a question on, it's slide, is it slide 12 for the, the ratio of SWD, 6.12 SWDs for every one paraprofessional. So when you talk about mitigating factors there, what are you, what are you trying to convey? Are you saying that, because you're saying that none of these mitigating factors are relevant?
That's correct. What we're saying is there is nothing in the three primary variables that would explain why there's a higher ratio than expected, that there is a higher number of paraprofessionals in the district, and because none of those three variables explained it, we really, I think we arrived on really the practice patterns of the overprescription of the one-to-one or shared.
Overprescription of all the one-to-ones. So for example, if you, I think one of the slides, we mentioned something about the more severe disabilities, you don't have a high percentage of those compared to other districts. So why then would you have the ratio that you have? And so that brings us to look at how are they being assigned, and when his kids move on, are they being reassigned elsewhere? How is that being looked at? And so we didn't get into that level.
Yeah, the answer really is the practice pattern. So let's take ABA. When ABA is truly ABA, it's applied behavioral analysis, again, it's a very labor and adult-intensive day, one-to-one, taking data. If the district is choosing that methodology, that explains really why there would be more, because it's so much more of an adult-intensive methodology.
Even though you may have fewer students with autism, you mean? The methodology that you're using is labor-intensive.
I see. And that's where we're going back to the exit entry guidelines for the assignment of Paris one-to-one and shared, so it can be a very objective and systematic discussion at the table, so only the students that really require that level of need.
So that means that you perceive that this is a difference from how other school districts would be behaving? Okay, interesting.
There's, based on our experience, the reliance on ABA methodologies is higher in districts.
We might like, we would like, we would likely see higher numbers of students with more severe disabilities be serviced in the district.
Understood.
But that's your assumption. You didn't get into that deep level of checking that out, is that correct?
We have a large database of other districts and what their delivery system looks like in Massachusetts.
No, I mean for our district.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, misunderstood. Yes. We looked at IPs, we looked at frequencies, so we were able to validate that qualitative information with a deeper dive on the quantitative data.
So you do know as a fact that it is due to overprescription of one-to-one?
That is the leading variable.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify, okay. Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify, okay.
So in your analysis and in your database of other districts and their models and how they deliver services, I guess my question would be is, those are all great recommendations in terms of how we optimize or improve the system, but are there other models that we may sure or should look at that might be more applicable towards the way we deliver services and our approach?
Sure.
From the different levels that are there.
I've lost my partner crime here because I was going to differ you, Mike. You caught the question.
I didn't get it, I was pronouncing it off the phone.
So the question was just very simply like, you know, you've looked at our system kind of like as it is and the way it works and functions and how do we optimize it, but are there other, are there actually other kind of models that are out there that we should be looking at that may drive some more significant or holistic changes?
Well, actually, we'll start that and you can finish it. There are other models, like we mentioned the teach method in there, that's a program out of North Carolina, Chapel Hill, and it's more of a holistic way for students with autism to basically interact with others, heavy on communication. ABA is very much an adult-student interaction, so there are other options, again, it's individualized. If ABA methodology is the most appropriate for the student, that's what they should be getting. But to your point, there are other tools in the toolbox, and I think even, actually, as students do get older, because we investigated that, that they call them ABA texts at the middle and high, but they're really not getting ABA methodologies per se. So it's already starting, but all that to say, even younger students, we think that there could be more tools in the toolbox for providers, which we, if the superintendent would like, we're happy to share those resources.
I think more tools in the toolbox is really what we're talking about because ABA has become a very widely accepted methodology here in Massachusetts. It's very labor-intensive, and it's not the only way to service kids. It's good for some kids, there are other methodologies that are good for other kids, and work better for other kids. And so I think in terms of understanding and how you deliver the services to students is something that you take a look at, and for most people that will require a particular type of methodology, you use it. If someone would benefit from something else, you use that.
So that determination of which methodology a certain child would have falls on the director or falls on the?
The IEP team.
Which is like entirely.
The IEP team.
Yeah.
But if there's information of, you know, more, a menu of different options to meet a student, that certainly should be a tool in the toolbox for the entire IEP team as well.
Question about the related service providers. And you mentioned the increasing social-emotional needs of the student population. Did you gather any data about how we're using the available district resources as related service providers for students?
Yes, I mean, specific to behavioral health. It's our sense that psychologists are primarily evaluators. So they're doing initial vows and triennial reviews, and the school adjustment counselors are doing more of the direct counseling. But when you saw that number, and I'll correct that, it said 49 to 1, and I apologize for the error, but when we looked at behavioral health, that was certainly a number that jumped out at us as the district. Again, we don't make assumptions about personnel, but that certainly was a low number.
And in comparison to your database of other school districts, how do we compare to what you're seeing across?
It's low, it's low. And again, Massachusetts, in Connecticut, in Rhode Island, where we have really good databases, it's very different than Arizona and Texas. Case loads in California, for example, are 28 to 1. That's the average in Massachusetts, it's 15 to 1. So we really have to do an apples-to-apples comparison in Massachusetts, and behavioral health ratios are low here.
So just to clarify, the ratios you were coming up with were a comparison to other ratios bound within Massachusetts rather than a ratio maybe based on best practices model?
Exactly. These are local ratios because Massachusetts, I feel like I'm already called the Newcastle, is a very, it's a unique state in terms of providing, their standard for providing services. To us, it's only fair to compare Massachusetts to Massachusetts.
Did you look at other best practice models for staff ratios or anything like that, just comparing to what's happening?
Sure, it's a fair question. Quantitatively, we wanted to limit it to Massachusetts, but qualitatively, best practices, we talked about the teach method out of North Carolina, that's more of a national discussion.
It's in a discussion like this where you realize, oh my God, there's a lot I don't know here, so thank you for your thoughts.
It's ever-changing, thank you.
Well, it is ever-changing, but at the same point, I think, building off of what she just said, I think it would be great to get an understanding as you look at best practices from a national base. I think when you limit yourself to one specific geographic scope, you kind of find yourself, been there, done that, we kind of do it that way. I'm not saying Massachusetts is not progressive maybe in some of these areas, but I have to imagine that, you know, some of the other areas that might have limited resources or limited scopes or their challenges financially are looking at things in a different way and are trying to look at how do we bring the best services, and maybe there are other unique ways. To your point, not every child is the same, too.
Yeah, we agree. ABA methodologies, you tend to see it more in districts that are closer to major hospitals, sort of like, you know, we've been in districts, there were in Houston, there's a touch of ABA, it's not quite to the extent here because they're close to the hospitals where there are BCBAs and there, it just, it's an interesting artifact, but you're correct. Countrywide, ABA is not as embraced as it is in New England.
Maybe it's time for us to look at something more in a hybrid-like model that brings some of the other things to bear as well. Just to your point, it is, I do agree, it is about the toolkit and expanding the toolkit. How does that kind of play and what's that?
Yeah, what's new?
Is there a state model that you would say most closely resembles where we should be going?
I wouldn't say it was a state model. I'd say that when we do a little research, there are district models to emulate, and we can certainly, again, we can share that. But in our view, it's one that, that's what we talked about, changing the ABA to a, you know, a learning service specialist because working with students with such a complicated disability, let's say, those paraprofessionals should be trained in all those methodologies, it shouldn't just be one.
Just curious, for the behavioral health, you know, you mentioned that it's very lightly staffed. Just, I know we have some relationships with community mental health providers and partnerships at the middle and high school level, and I just wonder how that kind of plays into your assessment and how that compares to other, what other districts are doing across the state.
It is a great start. Again, we don't have any hard and fast empirical data, but I can take it anecdotally. Behavioral health supports in the community are not keeping pace with what students need. And the fact that you already have these discussions is a great start, and I think what we're saying in that slide is that next step would be truly to establish that partnership so they would have a bricks-and-mortar relationship with the district.
But that's another area of concern. And every district we go, and how you address that over the next five years in your plan is going to be critical. I personally don't, and the things that I've been seeing in the districts that we've been in, and the stuff that I've been doing some research on, I don't think it's something that the schools can handle by themselves. I think the issues are more community-based issues, and I think the thing to be thinking about is to understand your community and know what's going on, what are the parameters in your community, what are some of the factors? A lot of the stuff that I have right now, we've been getting, is more anecdotal, I don't have the real hard data yet, but there are six, seven, eight, nine, 10 different things. So knowing your district and what are some of those factors that you can identify, maybe through a committee or something like that as part of the first step. But I also think, and what we're beginning to see, is school districts adopting health curriculum and social-emotional health curriculum. And I think the district here has also been looking at some of that. I think you looked at Castle, is that, you looked at Castle, Charlie?
Yes.
Yeah. And, you know, that's a nice program, it's a good program, there are others out there as well. The key thing is what works for your system, and the other thing is getting people to buy into it because it's a cultural change for everybody. Social-emotional issues and problems are not just happening for kids with IEPs. It's happening in math classes, it's happening in science classes, it's happening everywhere. And so how you can decide how you're going to support the principals with regard to those issues before they're even referred to special ed is critical. Because right now, you're doing a pretty decent job of it. You're not over-identifying kids at all, you're below the state average in terms of the numbers of kids with disability. And if you don't address that problem head-on, it could be a problem down the road.
So do we have any more questions? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, so next on the agenda is old business.
Okay, so you have in your packet, thank you, Mike, appreciate it. You have in your packet a proposed budget subcommittee schedule for our discussions in the fall and strategizing for the FY '21 budget process. We talked about really hitting the ground running with regard to budget subcommittee meetings starting in the early fall and kind of doing them a little bit differently in the sense of coming up with a thematic approach about what the pressing needs are for the districts. So you can see a slate of, I believe, we've got there eight different meetings that speak to issues such as special education, transportation, athletics, technology, facilities, and the various programs at all three levels. And the vision, as we discussed last spring, is to kind of address three essential questions, first being, what is the vision of the program and how does it fit in with our master five-year strategic plan? Secondly, what are the pressing needs for that specific program or services? And then what are the current and also projected budget drivers for that particular area? So for your consideration, I give you that proposed schedule. It is a little bit heavy on Tuesday evenings because I did look very carefully at the district's schedule as far as facilities, other activities and events that are going around. As we also discussed, I set them up in different locations all across the district with the mindset of having different venues that are varied, but also could invite our various stakeholders to each of those meetings.
Looks good to me. I like the approach. So Melissa left.
No more issues here.
So this is going to be very important to communicate to the community. So we want to get a lot of participation in this list and all of the thematic meetings that we can, just to get definitions down and get some facts out there to everybody about how the school district is spending the money and what we need money for, by principle.
And I would appeal to our CPAC members who are here this evening that the very first topic on Tuesday, the 17th of September, will be special education, special education staffs. Just for your purposes, that's going to be Tuesday, the 17th at 7:00 PM in the Misco faculty lounge.
All right, next correspondence is the next on the agenda.
So you have in your packet just some official correspondence from the committee, should you choose to approve it. And it's just a simple request to our Teachers Association to commence, a formal request to commence the negotiations process for a successor contract. As you know, this is the last of a three-year deal. As you also know, it is very, very early, extremely early in the school year, and I'm certain that they will have some organizational pieces, but per the discussion last spring, seeing the uncertainty around the budget process and so on, it would be highly advantageous to commence the process sooner rather than later.
So we need to vote on this, I would say.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, and that way you can make it official and sign off on it.
Okay, so can I get a motion to accept this letter as something we want to send out to the Teachers Union, pardon? No?
Oh, we make a motion that we approve the communications contracted to enter negotiations with the Minnetonka Regional Teachers Association.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. All right, next on the agenda, other matters not anticipated by the committee in 48 hours of, post meeting. Any other matters unanticipated? No, then moving on to future agenda items. What was that? Oh, okay. Future agenda items, next, approval of 2019, 2020 district action plans will happen on September 9th, and the superintendent's annual evaluation will happen on October 7th. That's it, right? All right. Anything else?
I'm going to make the motion.
Please do. I'm ready.
Hold on, I have a question.
The executive session we're going into right now, it says MGL check with 30A, section 21A. Can you explain what that means? I understand what executive session means, but what's the purpose of it?
Purpose is essentially to discuss personnel issues relative to the district.
Okay.
For various reasons, they have to be, probably remain within purview of the school committee.
Hi, so I move that we enter executive session via rule call vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection A, Exemption Number 1, and the committee will not return to open session.
Clear, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
We, Martin, aye.
Oh, yeah, we have to go by rule call, by rule call. Okay, by rule call.
Jill, is that her aye?
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Sean Nicholson, aye.
Lee Martin, aye.
Curtis Scully, aye.
Fifty-Lenardson, aye.
All right, very good. So the general session will adjourn, and we'll move on to the special session. Wow. 15 years, 15 years.